Six thirty-seven P M. Roll call.
Counselor Russell.
President.
Counselor Miller.
President.
Counselor Austin.
Resident.
Counselor Bond.
Howdy.
Counselor Bushing.
Here.
Will everyone please stand for the pledge of allegiance?
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'm actually going to entertain motions to be adjourned at this point.
Mr. President, I have made a motion after Page Number Six to be adjourned under the interval of eight minutes from the concession. And then for Senate on Fish Business, we're going to take one first, which is the discussion of veterans coming in.
Second.
All right, we've got that motion that's consecutive. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of us say aye. Agenda is amended. All right, first, next up, we have the pertration report. Does anyone have any questions on that section? We'll move on to the party reports. Any questions? All right, saying aye, we will move on to the public request to speak for topics now related to an agenda item. And we have one this evening, and it's on the Post Firearms Ordinance and it's written in the catalog. Please come forward at this time. Please state your name and address.
For what location does the council claim? It's written in the catalog, seven-seven-two-zero Eagle Point Circle, Zion Boulevard, Indiana, four-six-zero-seven-seven.
You in?
Counselor Parsons, I would like to, if you get a chance to read at a later point in time, I fully understand if not at this time. I delivered a long, my speech, my made letter that I had to all of you as an open-ended letter for all of you. The clerical treasuries have passed that out to you. If you need a copy, I have extra. I am here in opposition to the ordinance as it stands. I would like to point out a couple of points where that our community is a multicultural and very diverse community that celebrates many different holidays that are not listed on the allowed days. Such are, just like what my neighbor celebrated recently, Pavi, it's a Hindu festival. It's very, very popular with the local Hindu culture, and they do use fireworks to celebrate. There's a variety as well, Chinese New Years, everybody's rather familiar with. But also whether it's a kid's birthday, or it's a religious or cultural event, the requirement to use a permit to go about lighting off and celebrating as you wish, as it stands now, would limit that. I have proposed some changes to that. I understand we had a lot of rain this past July, and it seemed like we had a two-week span at least of non-fireworks because of the rain. Everybody lived in all different times and one had their own show a week or... But that can still happen, at least for a week or four of the current laws. What I'm proposing primarily is a limitation in, reasonable limitations in timeframe as opposed to certain days. If it still becomes a problem, then expanding that timeframe or limiting that timeframe, even possible more and possibly restricting to the weekends, along with the still having available for a permit to celebrate traditional days that are not weekends. I'd like the removal of the restriction on debris. The existing laws for littering should apply effectively, and I believe they are actually stronger functions. So if a person decides to not pick up their debris, that is littering. And also it essentially becomes a defect again because the burden of proof is then placed upon you to ensure you have a proper permission from any and all property owners that you may have debris fallen on. You're limited to snakes and sparklers. Also the ban on public streets. I fully understand that why some little army could be a hazard there. But many subdivisions use their courts to produce shows. It's a little wider area, it's a safer area to light off fireworks because they don't have a chance of tipping, falling, going into houses in the crowd when that happens. So I would like that to be advised. And also, I would like to state that I am in favor of how you have written that your public property such as the municipal complex here or parks are limited to only for a show. I fully understand that's a liable factor for the town as a whole. So I do agree with that. And last, I would basically just like to say that since seventeen-seventy-seven, we've been using fireworks to celebrate our freedom. And I would like to be able to continue that tradition, however long or for the life of the whatever the will has it to celebrate reasonably. So if you have any questions, I would be looking to have them addressed. We'd gladly work with you to develop some more common sense fireworks. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, is there anyone else here who wanted to discuss the fireworks? Okay. Give your address and name for the record.
Hollywood Plaza Street, seventy-two fifty-three, Red Maple Drive, there's one in Blucher. And just a few things to add to his request for speaking on, you know, as a veteran, and there's many veterans behind me tonight, that's awesome. I get celebrating holidays and freedom with fireworks. These fireworks not always gonna leave air in the end anyway. So, you know, I don't get the argument there, but, you know, weekends, holidays, great. You know, there's a lot of veterans with PTSD in animals. We live in a horse community. And a lot of animals and horses that fireworks affect. Veterans with PTSD, you know, different things that, you know, fireworks do affect. And we are in a rural area where there are lives of animals. So I would tell you, not as a horse owner, but as a dog owner, you know, yeah. You know, do I have to go drive my dogs seven days a week, every day when someone's lighting up fireworks? I don't, to me, that's not fair of me either. And yes, I agree it should be allowed to celebrate. Celebrate on the weekends, common sense times, holidays, American holidays. Plus, I would say we do live in the United States, not China. So, you know, that's the only thing I'd say about that. Thanks, Senator.
Is there anyone else? All right, we will move on to the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. President, I approve of the consent agenda items P, expenses town, revenues town, utility claims, water operating, R D, project, waste water operating.
Second.
All right, we have a motion that's been seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All of us say aye. Consent agenda is adopted by the zero. All right, moving on to unfinished business. First up, we have a discussion of our Veterans Committee Ordinance. And first, we'll just have a short discussion, and then we'll let our residents here speak on this. Come forward. But I just want to start off by saying that hopefully when we come back to our meeting later this month, we have another budget meeting we're going to schedule later this month, we'll have the final version of the Veterans Committee Ordinance. There are probably a few tweaks that I think we all don't need to make. And I need to still follow up with Councilman Russell, hear your suggestions. I have time to do that, and so hopefully we can get it passed this month. And that's why it wasn't on the agenda, but I think it's good we're discussing it so we can hear from the veterans that are here in support of the ordinance. Anyone else?
I'm sure it's inclusive of all the veterans that are here, how are they in the future in Whitestown?
Yeah, I think, so one thing I was going to try to work with Steve on is, you know, adding some sort of language into the ordinance that would basically, if a veteran service organization buys physical property in Whitestown and actually opens up an organization in the town limits, you know, we would consider giving them a spot on the order to, so some sort of trigger in the ordinance. That would, and that's another reason why I didn't want to finish it up tonight because we still got a little bit of work, but I think we're really close.
I was just going to say to change my language from American Legion Service Benefit Organizations. Now, so the town will be, you're going to appoint people that are in here, that are part of the long, and that lost all here. And that would be a good point, wouldn't have to change what it's about. But Service Benefit Organizations.
Of certainly.
Certainly, if we were being D A K, you know, it may not be a physical presence in town. Many veterans in town are movements and organizations, not just American Legion.
And those people, certainly, they're the organization of the war, but, you know, it was my own personal opinion that a veteran service organization that has a physical presence, you know, a skin in the game, should have, you know, more of a presence on our Whitestown Veterans Committee. And that was where I was standing.
I have to say, Mr. President, I agree with your comments. The American Legion Post Four Ten has been very active in Whitestown for many years. And the coordination and cooperation between the Legion and this body of other local government ordinance over these last couple of years has been tremendous and having them recognized for that in their specifically identified in this commission, in this committee, I think is a very positive benefit. And I look forward to when we can come back there this month and finalize and get the committee going. Because I really do look forward to seeing what comes out of their work.
All right, we will move on to...
I've heard there was some reservation, because I think Mr. Russell had, he fell as low as reservation for, since we're...
I cannot, he's going to have to come back, I'm sorry.
Yeah, thanks, I'll change. Uh, person.
Silver.
I'm going silver. Forty-one seventy east, five fifty south.
Um, to say a little bit, did you write that as on both?
Uh, my question is, you've made reference to Mr. Russell had some other concerns that you haven't talked about. With a room full of current residents in the Whitestown American Legion here, we'd like to hear what that disabled vet has concerns about.
My concerns are twofold. First, that we don't exclude any veterans organization. Now, I understand the American Legion's intent, and by rights to authority, I get every one of these. But by just that simple change of language, the same Service Benefit Organizations versus American Legion, it opens it up if others and other councils decide that another Service Benefit Organization should have one or two of those as a head of seats. Okay, it's not being excluded in there, but it's open about the others. Now, the other concern, and this was actually spoken by others besides me, was that this would have been the one committee that would have allowed non-residents, the only Whitestown community that would have allowed non-residents. It should be residents. And we had a discussion, President Miller, on that, about the, I know a part that had to do with non-veteran serving. And as others have said, well, spouses and widows and others that are connected with veterans should be allowed. And that, I do agree. So, you know, if it's her, if I look at the fentanyl, it's what I was hoping. Does that ask any question?
Yes, sir.
All right, so at this time, we'll move on to everyone who signed up to speak in support of the Veterans Committee Ordinance. If you all did want to come up. Whoever wants to go first, I'm not going to make the order here.
Mr. President, in terms of our council, Tom Manning here, and members of the community. Again, this is Ron Dotteris, the Administrator of the American Legion Post Four Ten. The Whitestown American Legion has been the only veterans organization in Whitestown. It was organized and chartered in nineteen forty-six, and since that time, it's been very active in the community. With the rapid growth of Whitestown, the town has been an early adopter in making changes. And we really appreciate the proposal that's in front of you now for the organization to, or for the proposal to establish a veterans committee. To digress a little bit, it's a story I've told before, of when many of us Vietnam veterans returned, there wasn't a parade, there wasn't many recognition, there were no pats on the back. It was as if we committed some kind of crime and it was our fault that there was a war. And that one of your Whitestown residents was a combat vet. Upon returning to San Francisco Airport, was spit on. That was our welcome home. And those feelings have stayed with us throughout the years, many years. Until a couple of years ago, when we started getting the recognition. And it makes us feel, really appreciate that, and which also brings us back to this committee. The establishment of that gives us a little warm feeling that what we did was the right thing, and we did it for America and for your community. The American Legion Post here looks forward to working with this committee. And I would hope, since we are the only organization, that you reconsider that and leave it as the American Legion. Until at some point in time, some other unit wants to...
Ron, is there any talk on the American Legion account?
Well, let's let him finish his conference, and then we can...
We've got a few other people that will address specifics, but I just wanted to do a little overview for you. Counselor Russell.
Other than that, um, do you guys have a color?
Sorry?
Do you have any color for us?
We did, we had...
I'm not trying to put you on the spot.
We did have a color there for many years, and something happened, we're not old.
Let me explain where I was coming from before you come and present yourselves. I've had, when Whitestown's PA introduced the colors, trying to get other organizations. But when we introduced the veterans ordinance, would you catch me wanting to be the color of the flag?
Absolutely, sir. We have, we've been getting new members now from the Afghanistan era. So they're younger, they've talked to us about it, and we have a couple of the members now that are planning on organizing, so.
I think that would be nice, I want.
Thank you.
Thank you. Who wants to go next?
My name's Mike McQueen, I've been in Whitestown for twenty-four years, and then one more community, two, or two hundred and eighty. Uh, I read the, a couple pages that was given out to us, and I want to try to give you a couple ideas that permissions form, some of the things we might be interested in, and I would like to be part of that community right now. One of the things I would like to see, since I've been in town for many, many years, and we are getting new vets coming in, I would like to see when developers and new businesses come in and talk to this with the board, that the Whitestown American Legion is recognized, maybe something to be handed to them to help us get our membership growing and to make it a better place for the vets and for members. We do have S A L in auxiliary that go down, so it's not just the vets. The other thing I'd like to see is something done on Veterans Day. I don't suggest that's a trade war now, but maybe have some kind of a, a deal out the parking lot here representing the PA, and that's one of the things we could work on. The other thing I would like to see is that, I know the town is getting involved with our veterans recognition memorial that we're trying to get. We're in the process, we have a gentleman working on that, he might say a little bit more about it. But that would be one of the things I would like to see the committee talk about. A small town like Whitestown and a big town like Anson is, is, the Legion is really recognized as being part of the old town. And the vets that live there now, I want them to be in good representation. We want people to come to town and recognize the merit of outstanding of American Legion, and that this commission is the beginning that I'm sure other towns would like to see, okay, like to be part of. That's basically it. Any questions? That's basically it. Hope you guys give us a chance. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to go ahead and thank the council for considering the ordinance lack list to go ahead and recognize our veterans. I'll say a little bit of the story about, well, we represent two different groups right now, the S A L, and the Indiana Patriot Guard Riders. As former president of the Indiana Patriot Guard Riders, when we started having protesters show up at funerals degrading the families of our veterans, there was a group of the Amets that got together, and the American Legion that got together, and the same had happened here. From that point, we have spent countless hours, American Legion Post and Patriot Guard Riders, protecting the families from the vicious comments made by protesters at those funerals. To the point where even Indiana was instrumental in one of the first stand-back ordinances or laws put into effect to keep those protesters a certain distance from those affecting members. I've been working with the American Legion Post here for five years, personally. And it's a great organization, I think it's a great place for this community. And just because, oh, by the way, I didn't tell you what my address was, seventy-one oh-five South State Road, two sixty-seven, or Indiana, eleven, Indiana, four-six-zero-five, Virginia. So I'm not in Whitestown, but I work very, very closely into earth strongly with the town of Whitestown and with this American Legion Post. So I personally appreciate the opportunity that being a member of the candidate and a member of the American Legion Post, that I may be able to sit on a committee, may be able to have some voice in what we do in the future around here. I do believe in the discussion of other military organizations having the opportunity to have a seat on the board. There should be a trigger mechanism for it, if that happens, somebody lies in here, they want to see each table. If they're a military organization, I should, there should be a trigger put in there. Other than that, I think that I'm all in favor of going ahead and doing a little bit of tweaking on some of the verdicts and stuff down there. I strongly encourage you guys to go ahead and vote positively on this, or ahead and set this up. It'd be, I mean, you guys would be cutting new pathways for campaigns across Indiana, the United States. Thank you for what you're doing. Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Bill Stubblefield, happy for having us. I don't find it all ironic that we're meeting in the corner of Whitestown Parkway Veterans Drive. Thank you very much. I work chapels at Post Four Ten, and I come from a double gold star parent. Anything that we can do, and I'm assuming that this will be passed this month, anything that we can do to enhance the lives and amplify the magnificent work of our veterans is long overdue. Not only to the Vietnam veterans, my father and mother just came back from this honor flight as a Korean veteran, and they were welcome home either. As far as any borders are concerned, anybody with good wishes, anybody with good plans, anybody with good ideas that can help a veteran organization from anywhere should be welcome. Thank you very much for having us today.
Thank you. No.
Good evening. Dawn seven hundred forty-one seventy east, five fifty south, excuse me, east five fifty south, eleven, Indiana, four-six, oh, two. Not only is a member of the Whitestown American Legion, a member also of the ladies auxiliary for Post Four Ten, and also a member of the Indiana Patriot Guard. Greatly thank you for taking these steps. After doing some research, I believe we are one of the only communities that are even considered this. I couldn't find anybody that had a committee like this. First and foremost, I understand your concerns regarding making it limited to the American Legion. I understand that there probably needs to be a trigger mechanism, and only if someone has a stake in the game. And also opening it up to people who are a member of the American Legion that may not live in Whitestown is also a positive. People who live in other communities such as Mr. Vadio, Mr. Stubblefield, have wonderful connections that can help support a project like this for parades and memorial walls. Limiting it to just those in your community really can downgrade the ability to make this positive for everyone. Secondly, since you are mending the ordinance, there are two things I would like to ask you. Under Membership, Section Two, Point A, is where it says for auxiliary members. Unfortunately, in the American Legion Post, auxiliary means the ladies auxiliary, and excludes the sons of the American Legion. So if we can add an or S A L for sons of the American Legion and auxiliary members, because then that covers the sons of Legion members, and it also covers the daughters under the auxiliary, along with mothers, fathers, grand, all of the above. And that also is in Section B, the same parentheses, it just says auxiliary number. And that limits it just in the eyes of people. Secondly, being the only veteran service organization in Whitestown, and our current membership is just about three hundred. And that is pretty much equally split between Legion, S A L, and our auxiliary. We've recently updated our Facebook page, and most of you are members who have liked our page and see the things that we do. Our membership on that page has gone up almost sixty in the last week. So our word is out there, people know where to come to get help. And people also understand that when you're a veteran, or you're a family member of a veteran, people are more likely to speak to you than they are a stranger that has no idea what your family has been through, or no idea what's going on in their community until they go to the post and understand that they're not alone. We have members that are just returning, we have members that have returned years ago. And that's why Post Four Ten is so important to this community. And it needs to be individually recognized with the insertion or a key that will, if someone comes in and can help. But what, having that in writing, that you guys recognize our post, just like we did... But what, having that in writing, that you guys recognize our Post, just like we did for all the veterans on our side and our new road, it's really important to keep those things in mind. And the Legion has a plan for the next five years, ten years, fifteen years. We're not just here for the day-to-day, we're moving forward and making improvements, and we'd like to welcome you all on October first to our ribbon-cutting ceremony of our new patio. Thank you.
Thank you. Phil Fletcher?
President? Phil Fletcher, seventy-two thirty, red maple track, I think. Um, I agree with both everything that Don and the gentleman have all said. Um, you know, I do need to ask Councilman Russell, what, what is the organization down?
Uh, it's a veteran business organization, uh, and I was, uh, right, because, as you're saying, it's a part of the American Legion.
Very part of the Legion, sir. So what was the other organization?
It's a veteran business organization.
The V P A?
And there are others that are in town.
And I get that, I get that. There's no V F W, no Big Night, no...
We're excluded by saying it can, can come in.
Yeah, you, you can elect a little bit, right, as a council? You can elect, if you want someone off the, that council. Just making sure. Um, you know, I agree, you know, veterans only spouses, family members, that's a great idea, that, um, you know, non-veterans or fam, non-veteran family members, I believe, should probably be a part of this council, um, just not trying to exclude anybody that, you know, is patriotic or whatever. But like Don said, you know, veterans understand veterans' pride, so why not just keep it limited to veterans and veterans' families? Um, you know, residents or local members, I agree as well, you know, local members or local organizations or residents would be a great thing. And, uh, you know, if, if the council's permission, that color there is for them, I would love to see that in any town council meetings and stuff as well. Thank you for the opportunity again, and, uh, thank you for the ordinance.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we'll get through the list of everyone who's signed up. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak on, on the, uh, veterans? Chief veteran?
Council, thank you. I'm Chief Anderson, Police Chief here in Whitestown. And as I was saying, I'm listening to these gentlemen and they're going to speak. It became very self-evident to me that what we're doing here tonight is a wonderful thing, of giving our veterans an opportunity to voice. That doesn't happen in every community in this country, and it's extremely important to those of us who have served in the military, I mean, I'm an Army veteran, I'm chief of quite a few members of the department who are military veterans. And the thing that really struck on to me was, we're enjoying a lot of the freedoms these gentlemen sacrificed to be able to sit here tonight and do a consideration of white lives. And I can tell you, as the chief, uh, there's been many a time that I have reached out to, uh, the American Legion Post for, uh, emergency things for people in the community, and never once, not one single time, have I ever been told, "I'm sorry, Chief, help me." They do whatever it needs to do. I think it's very good that this community shows that, that we do honor, we do honor our sacrifice and make it sound. Thank you.
Okay. Hey, thank you everyone for, for coming in, uh, and us here, your support of the ordinance. It's very good to hear, uh, because, you know, we don't always know if we're doing the right thing, and, uh, when we create ordinances and reservations, uh, and sometimes people let us know. Uh, so it, it's certainly good to hear that, you know, even though there may need to be some changes, we're headed in the right direction, and it'll be a good partnership moving forward.
I, I agree, everything that you guys all came up and shared is great in here. Being tied to the American Legion, you guys have been named, and, uh, named, I guess.
Thank you. All right, next, we will move on to unfinished business, ordinance twenty sixteen dash thirty-three.
Ordinance twenty sixteen dash thirty-three. An ordinance of the town council, the town vice president, a vacating portion of the former Cary Fourth Road.
Okay, sorry, let's see the, uh... All right, so we will first open up the upper hearing for ordinance twenty sixteen, uh, dash thirty-three. And is there anyone here, uh, to speak on ordinance twenty sixteen dash thirty-three?
Mr. President, will you close the floor?
All right, and a motion that's been seconded to close the meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. Five to zero. Open the hearing, please. Close.
Ordinance twenty sixteen dash thirty-three, ordinance of the town council, the town vice president, a vacating portion of the former Cary Fourth Road. Mr. Russell, I move the actual ordinance to twenty sixteen dash thirty-three.
Second.
All right, we have a motion, and then, and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say no. All right, ordinance is adopted, five to zero. Okay, up next, we have the discussion of purchase of equipment for the Parks Department. Move, say. Thank you.
This has been in front of you before, and we went back to the Parks Board, and they voted three-zero.